We are live.
Yeah, here we go. Okay. YouTube says we're live, so we're going to. Are in session. I checked Facebook. Um, so, welcome. Anybody on YouTube, if anybody's watching, um, this is our first attempt at a live YouTube meeting. We've got every, you know, some of the president's present, so. That's the biggest call to order. Uh, is there any, anybody here for public forum? You've done that for your agenda on the agenda or just here to watch? And I will call for a motion to approve the minutes from previous meeting.
Will they motion to approve the minutes from previous meeting?
Motion, Mavi, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and discussion? Are you none? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Alright, in business. Um, D O T was supposed to be here today. She called me. She had something come up. She couldn't make it. Um, but we are supposed to put in questions and, um, we can call her tomorrow. I can call her tomorrow and get those answered and get back to you. Kathy Kelly, is there any?
No.
Mary Kelly, I'm sorry. So, the discussion her and I had was that, um, we can forego the detour and we can, they certainly set it up to 210th Street down, but people are still going to use Madison Street. But any damage, we're on the board. They suggested we do the detour through town, take pictures after Heartland is done, and then take pictures again right before the detour starts. And then, we take pictures again when the detour is completed. And, they will work with us for damages. The gas tax numbers they proposed was as an estimate is basically a matter of days that the construction product, uh, per, uh, construction is in place. So if it goes longer or shorter, it's based on a per day project. So that number's going to grow or shrink based on how long that project goes. As you're basically giving me what questions you guys have.
I know they've put a lot of other state highways and everything else, would they be able to, would they be willing to, uh, delay or install one of those speed limit signs because it's coming into town here as well?
Good question.
Because, you know, traffic's going to be increased. That is a, um.
Like the digital sign?
Like the digital sign that shows the speed, like the solar ones that they put up on the highway, that they do have any of those that they could install for us. To help try to reduce the amount of, uh, speed when you're down. When a slow car is sitting there, yeah, people slow down, but it also, those people recognize or see the speed there and also help, uh, reduce the speed as well before it happens.
And she also mentioned we can do an embargo, uh, on oversized trucks. And anything, yeah, you, I think she's kind of talked to you, she said she talked, she talked to somebody about it. There's certain limitations we can and can't do on that embargo. She was trying to go to us.
The other thing I was recommending was not allowing the, uh, all systems permits. Where they can exceed it by twelve and a half percent.
Something about, there's certain, there's a certain, like a regular semi can do it, but like all oversized semis cannot, and. Is it eighty seven?
Eighty for five, ninety for six, ninety-six for seven.
Oh, axles, okay.
What about the certain business out there that hauls big excavators and whatnot, would they be classified under that? They need a place to get in and out of. So they already travel on that, so they already have permits there to export, so. Didn't know how to change if you're going to embargo it or anything like that. No, they'd be permitted for that. They have a permit already.
Yeah, again, I just expect her to be here, so.
But we have a meeting next week.
We do, yep.
So.
We'll be later back.
When, when is the, when is it set to start again?
Next spring.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Anything else on the, on the closed detour? Okay, we'll move on. Liquor license removal. Liquor license removal for Jonesy Stop and Shop. Do they know of any issues over there? I know they had some last year.
I think that was just tobacco.
Oh, it's tobacco. I haven't heard of anything. Cody said there was, Cody said there was no issues, so.
I'm making a motion to approve, will there be some for Jonesy Stop and Shop?
Mavi to approve the liquor license for Jonesy's. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Alright, and a discussion? Are you none? On favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, website. I was here talking about, uh, he's got some information on, on a different website.
Mr. Mayor, Council, um, I've got a few crap pieces. I've got one for everybody. What this is, and I just want to preface this, is I have no vested interest in this company at all. But, I wanted to bring this forward because of, um, as technology changes, as society changes, one of the things that I find myself doing and others do is utilizing the internet for more and more things on a daily basis, which cuts down on times I have to call one or two things. And, wanted to give you a little background here. The website that currently the city has, um, remember we met with, uh, Anna Frederick of Webwise several years ago and started discussions on that. They migrated that to that hosting of that website that was previously done, I think, through Cheryl Flatness on her own. Since that time, um, technology's kind of changed, um, things have been simplified, and as we've gone to more mobile-ready society, some of the websites just haven't kept up with that. So, this company that, um, you have a presentation for an eventual proposal in front of your firm, it's called Neapolitan Labs, they're based in Des Moines. I think they have around twelve full-time employees. I first came aware of them in twenty eighteen when, um, they actually developed a statewide website that, that our Otters affiliate uses. And since that time, I've been impressed with the company and impressed with the product that they deliver. Since that, they actually, Serra County subcontracted with them this last year, last spring of twenty twenty-four. So our entire county website has migrated over to Neapolitan Labs. And since that time, I've obviously been utilizing it, mostly on a, uh, updating it on a weekly basis, but certainly utilizing it, um, multiple times throughout the day. And, what I found about this website compared to others that are out there is that it's very adaptable to future changes. It's very easy to navigate. It's mobile-friendly. And the best part is, is that it can be maintained very easily. So, what I did on behalf of the city is I reached out to them to see if they even offered the service for a city of our size. They do, and what they pitched back is a kind of a broke-down, scaled-down version of some of their larger clients, where it would have several different modules or pages, if you will, such as an alert page where you can have notices, banners, and information on each page. You'd be able to break the ordinances down. Right now, it's currently one large PDF file, whereas it can be broken down into different sections and topics and make it searchable. One of the, the nice features of it is it would have a filter, a file system designed into it to make the minutes, agendas required posting more easy to post, more easy to find, and more navigable for the, the end user. As well as uploading those and maintaining those as well. It's much, much simpler than currently is out there. Comes with several other features. Obviously, you have a calendar of events, FAQ page if you wanted it, department contact information, links to external pages, external links to other entities, nonprofits, NGOs, things like that. And then, it simply streammines a lot of the stuff. It answers a lot of the questions that the public, visitors, new residents may have. You can very easily put it out there from the. As with anything, there's costs to this. I, I don't know what the current annual license or hosting fee is right now. The, to implement this website tomorrow on a, on a city this size, their average cost is about thirteen thousand dollars to do that. We were able to negotiate it down and for a one-time development fee of six, six thousand dollars, and then an ongoing annual fee of one thousand dollars, which would be their cost to host it and have access to their platform to actually do the maintenance of it. If the city were to move forward with this proposal and migrate the website from, if the URL stayed the same, but migrated from Webwise to Neapolitan Labs, I would be happy to offer my services to maintain the site at no cost for the city. The only thing I ask is that Laura would email me the minutes, the agenda, and then anything else that you want out there. Pictures, um, news articles, upcoming events, things like that. Since I've been there utilizing this software on a regular basis anyways, it would be simply switching over to the Rockwell account and then uploading documents that way. So I'd be happy to do that, just to make sure that the public has access to the information, and also it's there to be on the forefront and give that stuff out there for you. Going forward, essentially, if they were to enter the contract, they have a estimated timeline of implementation. So it started the kickoff meeting, they pull relevant information off of the current site. They would update with new pictures and things like that whenever it was provided. And then they would, uh, have a demo where everybody had opportunity to look at the site, test it out, make sure that it said what they wanted to say. It reads correctly, the pages are formatted correctly, um, all of that sort of stuff is perfect, and then they do a go-live. So the timeline is, that's spelled out in there, is, is, we could actually accelerate that quite a bit because there wouldn't be any onboarding or prep work for that. But it could certainly go live before the first year if you so choose to. So, just bringing it forward, um, like I said, I spent a lot of time on city and other entities' websites, and just I think it might be time for a refresh, and I think this opportunity would be a, a great way to refresh it, so.
Are they able to pull over the current minutes and all that kind of stuff?
That's part of the, the migration is yes. Whatever is out there, they would have to get access to that, yes. They would pull that over and then move that into the new file structure. So typically, what they do is it would be by year. So it'd be, uh, instead of right now, it's the running list, they pull all the minutes, the agendas, they have two separate files, and then they would have those by year. If you move forward and continue with the YouTube videos, um, this has an automatic link to it where you would just, I assume you're posting the videos onto the city YouTube channel. You would just paste that URL into that, and then the residents would be able to see the minutes and the YouTube video offer right there.
What type of security issues do we need to be worried about in regards to these videos that are going on, so that they can't be hacked?
So, it's, the videos are hosted by YouTube, so that's all I get. So you're utilizing all of YouTube's resources and all of their data, so you're not hosting anything yourself. So, they would have to compromise YouTube's databases, which most counties are utilizing YouTube as their repository for those, so it's, uh, it's essentially a city safe and clear. There's no statute or requirement for the city to record any sort of live meeting at all, so it's just an additional bonus. If YouTube were to close business tomorrow and, and stop ceasing operations, you're not in violation of anything because it's just an added bonus that you're doing to provide those.
What do we currently have yearly for?
I think it's three hundred.
Did we sign a contract for?
Totally, maybe, it's twenty dollars, I think.
Can you have a contract? Then?
Yep.
What's our contract?
You would change and update everything. I can give you this one page that has, this is, this is the. It would be the, what would be the cost to add extra things, and I don't know. Want to add extra new things that.
I have that one, yes.
I didn't give you all these pages because we would, we didn't sort of need to name them. Yeah, we didn't talk with Brian. He said, can we do that?
Great. Yeah, we'll do a lot.
First thing, I guess, I don't see love in your computers, and that's true.
I'm working on that.
What is yours?
So, nothing is, nothing would be hosted on your, on your computer at all. So, maintain the, if you went to Neapolitan Labs, you should act, you don't have any hardware or any, anything here on site. It's all hosted by them. So you would simply need any sort of device to log into their backend platform. It has multi-factor authentication, and then you would be able to update and modify and change pages from there if you wished, or who, you could assign to whoever.
It just has the, the ADA compliance, they've been putting on the last couple of years. It's a piece of privacy policy. They want thirty-one hundred just to bring the page back up to.
They can do it for that twenty-five hundred, that top page.
Oh, the twenty-two top page, okay.
Said that those other things, we don't currently have anything like that, so unless we wanted any of those additional, we'll switch.
And then we're still maintaining the site yet?
They maintain, we would, well, we would put things on.
And this, I think you said it, but just kind of, this is the same, this is the same number as the county?
Correct.
That's a nice, easy.
Who are we under a contract with? Webwise.
Of course, it's seven or eight years ago or more than that.
You were on and I were on, yeah, so.
Yeah, it was like twenty-four.
You were on, dude.
They were doing service for us.
Went to Webwise, yeah.
You started it, then you left, and then, uh, you finished it, and then I'm still struggling.
Yeah, I think you're doing very.
Thanks.
So, no, um, innocent. I, I have zero vested interest in this. I just want to see the city have their information out there. And I'm just very happy with what Neapolitan Labs can do by this.
Does anybody here use the county's name? Once in a while. Anybody in the city who wants to?
I'll look that up. There's not much on it, in all fairness, there's not, and I don't, not starting to figure out. I'm trying to figure out some of the other stuff to even change for the city council stuff tonight, for pictures and anything else, I think. It's just not very user-friendly or more of a role, so.
That's what's the night and day difference between what's existing and what Neapolitan Labs is bringing is the back end. So it is user-measurable. You can upload images quickly, you can change the font, you can change the language. It's, it's much more user-friendly. And that's the thing is, is if you look at traffic to the current website, it's going to be next to zero because there's nothing on there relevant. You're required to statute or post certain things with budget process, and that's about the only thing that's getting really updated on a regular basis. What we have found, because the Neapolitan Labs comes with Google Analytics, is that when you have a well-functioning, well-designed website, people start using it. So instead of asking about, hey, did, is garbage recycling moved to back a day because of this holiday? That is all automatically on the website, so people have access to that. Once they learn that it's there, they can just go there and see. So, the, the, the hard part is getting people motivated to go to that site, but once they do, it cuts down on the, the phone calls, the traffic and the alarm.
Is there, so like the school website just redid theirs, and they have like a live feed? Is there a live feed on it?
A live feed such as what?
So like, if I were to upload something on it, it would just like kind of flash across the bottom?
So there's different ways to do it, is you can do highlighted things, and so like news and highlight calendar events, that will be first and foremost on the homepage.
Yep.
And also, if it's a emergency, you can do a banner across the top as well of every page, so.
Because I was just thinking about the garbage thing, then we could put it on there and it's already there.
Things like city halls closing, water main break, um, take your garbage cans out tonight, you can put that as a banner on the, uh, a flash banner on front of every page if you wanted to. The only thing that you wouldn't have with this that, um, the county website has is, uh, you could for additional costs, but I don't know if it's relevant, is automatic notifications for when agendas are posted or minutes are posted or things like that. That is something that you could do down the road if, if you wanted to as well. That's a nice feature, because if you are automatically required to send out information, that just means you won't step, you don't have to do any work, it's not have to be listed or anything.
Is there an automatic notification, like there's the code red and everything else? Is there something like you could do reverse, uh, notification push that way out of it?
Not currently, no. No, I don't know. They ran into problems with that nationwide with, with that because you start to get into, people have to opt into that is the issue. If you, and so, that's where the whole of it is. So no, there's not currently a good system for that. And to do landline calls or long-distance calls with that, like with code red, it's not really adequate, it doesn't really work that well in essence because of our, we are, because it's a long-distance call. And sort of push that out, to route that out, it has to go as a long-distance call out of here, and you just want to have the backbone infrastructure to handle all those phone calls at once.
How long, how good, how long is this quarter?
I guess it's not an end time on it, but, um, but yeah, I, I do know that they're getting busier at the end of the year, so they're open to get smaller stuff picked out sooner than later.
So six thousand dollars would include the, would not include the annual fee?
It would include the first year.
It included, and then, uh, okay, so it'd be part of that six thousand.
So essentially, it's five thousand dollars for the design development and point of the content over the, the launch of it, and then a thousand dollars for the annual license. Gives you access to their hosting services. So I know that's a non-budgeted thing, but I know there's been some discussion about websites and information getting posted and things like that, so. One better way to say that we are having the agendas out there ahead of time and the minutes are posted timely. And there's no. Probably, no, they have access to.
Seven years ago, Webwise's site, they sold us, was cutting edge.
True.
It's wholesale. Was here, obviously. It's now the cutting edge. It's very easy to navigate. And so, what I mean, something, I don't write where it is.
So what it means that it can be maintained.
Yeah.
The hardest part is getting the context, but it's maintaining it's easy. So the minute that Laura has the agendas, agenda type, could be uploaded back.
It's easy to find.
It's easy to find.
Something she could automatically upload right from her computer?
She could, yeah. Yep. She can do it, or I can show her how to do it. Or, like I said, she sends it to me in an email, I can have it posted in five minutes.
Is there any of you sitting up tonight? About it? Make a decision, right? That's right, we are meeting. Yeah, I, I implore you guys to check out the, the county website, check out our site.
So you should like, you could call a couple of other city websites and be very similar to, so. Should have had it for a few weeks down here.
Yep, yeah. Any other questions, Brad? Sir, I'm, you want this? I'm ready, I'll put the door, thanks, Adam. Alright. Fun stuff. Setting the trick-or-treat time. Halloween's on a Friday this year?
It is.
So. It was Friday, it was Saturday? Teachers always seem to have an opinion on this.
As long as it's not on Thursday.
Is there, I guess there's not a game Friday.
Well, no.
When I grew up, we played till November, so.
As on playoffs, so. The first playoff game would be till the twenty-fourth, and if they win that one, then you go through the following Friday, so it'd be potential.
So should we just avoid that and, uh, just we don't have to change it and just go with the first?
November first, it's that Saturday? I think the Saturday weekend works a little bit better for people anyways that are often.
Don't rush after work.
We could do a little earlier too on Saturday. People wait five to seven.
Well, daylight savings time that weekend. So it will be, uh, we won't have the darkness yet.
I think Saturday sounds like a good idea.
November first, five to seven? Is that a motion?
I'm not a motion.
Okay. Mavi, consider trick-or-treat time for November first from five to seven. Second. Brian, on favor?
Aye.
Close. Vacancy tax and fines. Spoke with the, uh, attorney, and he did some research for us, he sent us all some information on some other cities that already employ some, uh, vacancy tax and fine schedules. We have to leave you guys this week. Turn it around, and I can be straight from work, so I don't have them with me, but I can pull, do you have it? So, anybody have any opinions, thoughts?
Webster City's on there.
Oh, it's a whole package. You said you sent those to me?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't think I sent.
I don't think I, I don't have.
You sent to me. But, Brian had sent me one from a couple of different ones, and in my opinion, this is the one that I like. So, Webster City says, "In May twenty twenty-five, the city passed an ordinance escalating fees for vacant commercial and residential buildings. After one year of vacancy, the annual fee increases a thousand dollars multiplied by the number of years the property has been empty. Owners must also submit a plan and timeline for reoccupancy and face initial penalties for late registration or not showing up for inspections."
Sure. So I was reading these as well, trying to figure out where they are.
That's simple, some of these.
Yeah, some of these are really like.
That, that one's dry.
I agree, and it's like, we're serious about it.
Yeah, like this is one ordinance here.
Because like, some of these other ones are raining, they're like twenty dollars, like, I don't feel like that's really.
Love the teeth.
Exactly. Especially when some of our buildings have been sitting empty for years.
Does it have a definition of vacancy on there? Because we probably need that.
I think it goes with your city nuisance code.
Yeah, this one, we talked about stairwells and doors and windows. This one's a de-buigs. This one, I can see a city here. Oh, Ralph, there is. City de-buig issues, annual licenses for vacant commercial and residential buildings, the annual fee is three hundred fifty dollars for both residential and commercial buildings. 申请人 application, schedule, response to minimum repairs, quarterly extra inspection forms, yeah.
So it's annually, that one is a thousand dollars, and then it's multiplied by how many years it's been vacant?
Yep. And they have to have a plan. They have to submit a plan after the fine of reoccupancy, and then there's additional penalties if they don't show up for inspections or they have late registration.
So, I'm assuming that's a civil penalty, so, a civil infraction, so that would be issued by who? Because I'm sure a lot of them have a code enforcement officer. So who issues that? Rebecca Cody that would issue that, or would that be?
While the fines are issued at the city level, Iowa State law provides a legal framework for how municipalities can address vacant or abandoned properties. So we have to, we have to put in? We have to write into them?
We have to write it into the code. Is there anything with NITE Cogs that they would be, um, that they have? Any of that type of stuff with?
I feel like there was something, I feel like that's where I got it from.
And was there any legal challenges to that, that, hey, rulings that say this is, would say it's not legal anyway? I'm right here. Because we don't want to be a legal challenge. So there's case law or anything behind it that, that allows it to, anything with, like that, maybe, nice to know as well.
Yeah.
Play out the secret, I think I'd be, I'll be good with the, I don't know what she is, but. Careful, sorry, sorry, sorry. Cody said you'd be fined during the city. Bobby said, you'd be fine doing a deficiency insurance.
Yeah, he just said that the one for Pocahontas, this says Ralph, but he said this for Pocahontas. It's very likely. Said would, would meet the need for uh, city of Rockwell. These orders create annual license requirement for the owner of the building needs a day. City then has responsibility to inspect the building once a year. Pocahontas might work with us to be around. That was from. Nobody ever walks by.
I did last meeting too.
And here's the second one.
Can I send you that one? Name on that one and what else we would need to add?
This is just like the short, short version of the debeuked one. Cause some of this stuff references our code sections a little bit more. We had to make sure it fit into our city ordinance and everything. And that's why I thought maybe NightCog would have better, better, since they know more code than they have in there. But if it's something as simple as what you do to that effect, that could just be given there. So I think NightCog would be a good. Already pay them to do all that type of stuff. Plus I think they have a charter. He's done as well.
It's quite extreme. Somebody went to a lot of work on that.
I think how we got to this was because in our zoning, it's, it breaks down what we can have. And not anywhere in our zoning does it say. So I think that's why I asked and that's when he said, some cities have these tax.
And that's our reason for zoning?
Yeah.
For NightCog?
Yeah.
So therefore we can contact NightCog and they could see.
You can be certain for your attorney.
So I'll send you that. And then he sent it to the attorney.
Do that?
He said to attorney and John.
Yeah.
Attorney and John and then John and Luke and then John did it too. Ask any questions?
And that was, he said that would let you save?
Yeah.
Did you board that?
This one reads just like the first one.
So. Eric, I will, I will send that out. I'll put it back in there. Urban Radio will take the reports. This one? No.
This one?
This one?
You need to review share. Just approving it. We really don't use it for anything. Right now, I mean, sidewalk, you can use it for some of those. Yeah, but I mean, there are options for that. I'm just making a motion to approve the uh.
Report. That's seconded. Motion from Brian for the second, the tip report has presented the second, if I have any other discussion? Eric, on favor?
Aye.
Can you need that be towards the? I'll get out of that.
Basically because we, like a, we're sitting long and we're using that development. So this is.
Yeah.
Money backs. So for that twenty percent that would use around.
Let's go back to wiring sewer.
It's on essence, yeah.
I was gonna like smoke that. Okay. Cemetery spray.
She gave me.
Oh, super.
You can look at, we got just two.
Thank you. I don't think it will. Two bids. One bid from True Green. Like it's seventy-five dollars?
You had to flip the next page.
So it's both?
Yes.
That you're saying, okay, so I have. Early fall and I have early fall. That was one hundred ninety-five plus seventy. So one thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. Down. One thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. That's great. It's just false. Fertilizer broadly, weed control as needed, weather dependent. Rockwell Center. I have a second one from Long Care. This is cemetery and city hall?
Are both cities? They're apples.
Okay.
Yeah, seventy-five dollars would just break around city hall.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, yeah, so the total for Weir's Lawn Service is thirteen hundred. So he hasn't broken it down as cemetery fifty, city hall. He has a broken down seventy-five dollars for the hall. Eleven fifty for cemetery. Eleven, eleven ninety-five for cemetery. Thirty bucks difference. Where's True Green out of? They have a three one nine area code. Athletic corporations.
They have some, the corporations, I think is the main offices in the city of Falls. They have peoples in different halls all week. Travel hour and a half.
John Atkinson is the person.
Thirty bucks and it's an Intel mobile business.
Yes, I will make a motion to go with.
I saw you on. From Abby, seven bid from Weir's Lawn Care Services to cemetery and city hall. Costs thirteen hundred dollars. Seconded by Jake. Corrected by Jake. Is there any discussion? Eric?
Aye.
Opposed? Cemetery fence.
Um, I talked to River City Fence about that. Apparently they got damaged in the storm. Two, say relatively small areas. That were damaged and need to be replaced. On the east side, there's a hundred and seventy-five feet. West side, there's a. Grand total for everything. They're gonna take away that. Three thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. What was it? Three thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars for a sentence.
We did receive a check from the insurance company this week. That is to cover again cemetery cost. They're coming back to look at the roof of this building.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. To have on that roof deal, I had some. And they both told me it is lifted a lot. The shingles are lifted? Correct. So like when we were up there and we just randomly walked around. Every single place was about to check. Came right up.
The adjuster was on the roof with me. He came out. As reported, he felt did not need to be replaced. Has continued done. Different adjuster come out. He's gonna meet with the contractor. Check it again. Have, have, you heard anybody yet?
Yeah, I was talking to them a lot yesterday. It sounds like. I can look at an insurance company, it's going to call me later this week or early next week. Figure out the date. I can get a quote from both the contractors I talked to and we can go from there. I could want to do that, wait to see what the adjuster guy says. Whatever, do what we can do. But shouldn't they have one of them there to argue for us? I mean.
We met with the insurance company on Friday. They wanted the adjuster and the contractor together.
Yeah. I don't know nothing about real estate and I'm supposed to block the reins. I don't know.
Yeah, our adjuster was busy with some other claims.
Yeah.
Couple days.
So with that twenty-nine thousand?
Yes.
Is that?
No. No, our policy only covers buildings and trees. As polite as possible, we'll let the bills that we had. Discussions with Eric up there at Mercy Manor. We're Michael from here. So I mean within.
So that's three thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars in forces the conditions.
So let's include the other cemetery with the bulk of what we have.
Say include any of the headstones to be repaired?
No. We're, that's still not covered by insurance.
Yikes.
What's the fence? I mean, I guess I haven't really noticed what the fence looks like right now.
Yeah, we got one side being strapped together, toe strap.
Yeah, he said.
Yeah.
He's, I put the whole thing out.
No, and that's what they guys said too and all. They said, I was talking about the street, Steve Paul was talking about the north side.
Yeah.
I'm like, they got that back pretty good.
First side.
Correct. It's just east and west side.
No, stuck between houses on east side.
If he's replacing it like the like, how it's called is. So he's gonna do that again with the same. That's already previous. That. Not a bad place. It's why not a feat where.
I was, I was happy with that. Now that twenty-nine thousand.
So if you're not doing deeds or anything, that's where you really.
Do you need approval for that to do the fencing?
Again, that's my insurance, I don't think we do. I just wanted to make sure. I understand what we're up to with that insurance money.
So you just, you get that done so we can get stuff back and. Basically, we gotta stay first, so.
I said again, I thought it was a fair price. The insurance company's going, how that goes later. About. Right. Okay. Let me put that rolling. All right, equipment.
So last time, we were talking about trailers and what. Got a couple of options here. I did not get a couple of options. They were more expensive than what I got here and I just don't feel like we're ever gonna use it. I just don't feel the need for it. So I got some tipped up trailers, which is here. You want, they can hold the skid loader. Sure. Tractor, I think weighs slightly more than skid loader. If we want something that holds that, you're gonna probably get a trailer next to it. Um, but two options are pretty big plus price. I got a couple of pictures here. It's on the place over Nashville. What is that place called? Cedar Grove.
Am I crossing cases there?
Yeah, I just know. Um, but one of them is H and H Trailers. It's eighty-two inch wide and twenty feet long. And that one is eight thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars. Over the other one is the same thing. Eight inches by twenty feet long. For eight thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And the really, the only difference is the brand. It's got a little toolbox up front. Hold some. And whatnot. Three, twenty feet, twenty feet long. Axle weight, it's four thousand G B W R. Gross beer going away. It's seven, seven for, for axle. I did my payload item, something on both. Four with eight, so. So the G B W R is four thousand. Fourteen, yeah. That is the one on this. They said four thousand, like, yeah, that's all right. I'm a little. The math was math. I can't see the vision. Yeah, you sure can. Hit it, Grant. I'm sorry, I should have done that. That one is black, the other one is gold. I got water. Didn't really want, didn't really need to be that much.
Sure.
It's yellow. Yeah, that's yellow. I would classify it as yellow, but. That's a big.
Yeah, it's somewhere shallow.
What's the other brand? H and H or what did it? Iron Bowl.
Iron Bowl?
Yeah. Those are built a little bit more here. There's a lot more. I think the payload is likely to decrease, but I'm still above my eight thousand.
They're both top decks.
I figured that was the best option. That way we didn't have to mess around with the ramps anymore. So. So. And I can get a dump trailer, but the cheapest one I found from that website was like eleven grand. GBWR. I mean, it's a little overkill for the morgue, but and I mean way over. Yeah, I, I understand that, but I wouldn't want you your skid Most of the time they do come and fix it whenever we need it, granted, I don't know. Minor stuff like changes in the engine oil. I don't know, I existed in the past previous to me, but Did you call over there or just? I called over there and those gave me trying to ride with. And I, I largely thought this tractor would be less than skid loader. So. But then I was looking on the website and I found a drip axle that'll hold tractor. So.
Much.
I don't remember the price, more than that, it was like eleven bucks. I think it was way longer than twenty feet too. The tractor weighs about thirteen, just about eight, three something. One large five. You know the sign? Bowl brand? I know the H and H.
I know the H and H.
Yeah, I got nothing about it.
That's fine. That was a black one. Is that, that's a bumper pole?
Yep. They have a lot of those brands on there. Nothing to sit fast, either one of them. The iron bowl. Three hundred dollars cheaper, I think.
Are you just doing all this stuff on the website?
I did a lot of it on there. I'm pretty deck savvy at home.
There are H and H dealers around here besides bringing up a clearly, I'm sure there's specialties up there.
I, I'm pretty sure I should have felt like to get their trailer.
I said, maybe else we have a different price. Wait a couple different places, this is what we're looking for for the same one.
I thought they were just separate seller.
Just learned some new today. I want to check truck specialties and and sellers, see what they have for the H and H trailer. As they expect some they make decision next.
For the same thing, pretty much for same things.
All right, come on, I'm sorry. All business.
Can we, sorry, uh, we talked about side. The who said were four feet wide to install. And you said there was something about it could replacement was matching with what was existing.
Like if someone wants to tear it up type of deal. There's a smaller piece. They could put in the same size, I would say.
Was it a replacement hatch of it, so it exists?
It would be mine. I don't remember verbatim what it said in the code book.
No, just weird like it, we're putting random in.
Yeah, other ones, uh, like for a pad or two, they could, they could match existing. Yeah, it makes sense, right?
And then anything new that'd be my understanding too, I just wanted to make sure that that didn't get torn out yet. The golden balls.
Yeah.
But, uh, the just make sure that we're if I want to turn it all off, I think it should be four feet.
Right.
Anything going forward now, that was like the thing that I had to do, just make sure before we go forward.
No, I think he understood that too, he didn't just say that to me or ask me questions. But you definitely keep an eye on him. Yeah, just make sure that we're on the same page, so that way.
Matt Barry got back to me about the question you had about the liability on sidewalks. I, I contest, or I guess he didn't. So basically, the city can be held liable sidewalk to see not the owner of the property adjacent thereto side of the curb. If you're not believing the city, you get out of being sued by injured person with removal removed sidewalk by requiring the adjacent owner of the property to assume the is the owner of the property. The city might have the right to sue the owner of the adjacent property harmless. The city has to pay any judgment ordered against the injured party. They can have in turn elect the adjacent property owner under the whole harmless provisions in the agreement with them. Any agreement also owners of the property. Then on notice, those are responsibilities to the agreement. You can report it, it's their accounting recorder. This required the agreement to have all property owners sign it and have legal expression of their property in addition to the law. So that's if we had to remove the sidewalk. The cell would be available if someone got hurt, whether it is not.
What do we do for the approaches to some of the streets? I know that some of our streets have that empty gap there on the sidewalk to the actual street itself. As well as the lovely, uh, going across the railroad tracks on the east street there. We gotta walk, but we have to go out into the streets and walk. And now sidewalks, because that's how we level the railroad property. I know we covered up the ones up there, we had to cover that railroad.
We covered up the elevator's tracks, we couldn't cover up elevator, obviously cover up their track. So the only track that we left open up here is which the main problem was the elevator's track.
The crosswalk part that they and the city record, I guess is responsible.
Yeah, so we do some of those that we need to get.
All right, we move on to question earlier, there's a TMS meeting tomorrow. Options we have for support back in this week.
Yeah, good. I'm just reading now. Um, so we have a RDC meeting tonight. That's the event tomorrow, I'm working with you on getting the property, the city property of that property to the RDC. And we're gonna pull, we're gonna have them re abstract it. Survey it. And then have another meeting.
Never gonna have another meeting.
Yes. We also approved to have sidewalks for now in the RDC and he said he would do it. And then or maybe exactly work on the trees this winter.
Give us spare time. Is that something that I can do? Is that what I'm trying to do? Well, I'm not very good with chainsaw, maybe go the right way. Those are getting for fees. I think we should probably see if we can on the ground in one piece. That probably would be a good cost to find out what that's gonna cost.
And we are gonna have it surveyed for four lots.
Yes. Is there gonna be alley? It's gonna be surveyed with an alley, but I don't think we're gonna put
Like a vacuum like that, I mean.
That's amazing. No. Let's do a survey with an alley.
Okay.
And sidewalks installed. There's sidewalk, two sides.
Just wanna make sure going forward. We're not doing stuff, we don't
They're not, you can't see the north sidewalk.
It makes sense to pull toward what sidewalk said.
Yeah.
I have a lot of people who question me about the whole I don't, I think it will go
Hey, we're gonna do it for first quarter. Right, quarter in it?
Yep.
What's the reason?
Cause everything else is surveying the same way, you look at all the other surveys, even the ones
Just keep it here.
Yeah. It's like even across the street. There's an alley there, there's nothing there. Sort of right away in case you have any other
Yeah.
stuff they
And for the legal thing or?
It also Or just following other properties. This still hasn't been
I don't remember, alley should be that north.
That's all.
Anything else?
Brian? I just requested that you put on there the speed trailer for next and next week for the original agreement. Is it just a it's very there'd be one like that be written up or you can't that so that ready to be approved.
Uh, we have one thing, it was asked about trim and full sign. Any tree trimming be done or is are we limited on what trimming we can do?
It's actually already marked, it's already, it's on the list, the things be done, ideally just has to get up there and do it, so.
He was gonna do it like and then
So that is on his radar.
Moms, this year the Fisher Club decided not to do it, so three years away, we will redo that next year.
I forgot to tell Lorna that, she thought we got robbed.
I actually walked yesterday, I was like, where'd you go?
Yeah. I got another one.
I make most
Most having a journey, second memory, I'll remember.